It's kind of fun. To example, T twenty four, one thousand one hundred and fifty is just a million over the top of the city. Um, we only have one thousand five hundred and fifty three, I'd like to talk about. Uh, this place dividing the city into districts. Uh, a question that the city council intends to resolve later today, or go on this meeting at the end of the day. Is whether we will move to five districts or four districts and one at-large mayor. Um. We also want to hear from the community on that issue, and we also want to hear from the community. Uh, on what are some of the communities of interest? And that that is a technical term that has been floating around, you can't say the line. Kind of fancy, the way of saying, what if. Since the city is moving to districts, we want to hear from you what communities, what micro neighborhoods usually should stay together. We don't, we don't want to split interests, we want to keep people together. So for forgive me, I'm not going to call on questions, but this, this is how we're going to run the meeting. Uh, first, the city clerk is going to establish that we have a quorum. And then there will be a brief presentation, um, from, from, I guess, from our attorney. Um, and it's sort of the staff report. Members of the city council will then have an opportunity.
Out of place.
Sorry, is this better? Usually people say I'm too loud, so I apologize for not being conscious about. Um. Okay, so after the quorum is established, city staff will give a presentation. Members of the council then ask questions to staff, and I am then going to open up the floor to public comment. Typically, at a meeting when the floor is open to public comment, the amount of time the public has to ask questions or to speak. Uh, is limited to one, two, or three minutes. I don't intend to do that today since we only have one item on our agenda, and it is a very important item. Uh, I think we want to give everyone an opportunity to say their piece. I don't want people to feel rushed, and I want people to express their ideas. That being said, if you are taking an excessive amount of time, I might ask you to, to wrap it up, but I, I don't anticipate that that's going to be a problem. Um, there is one norm of the way we run our meetings that I do intend to follow. And that is that when members of the public are giving their comments, there is not an ongoing. Back and forth between the council and members of the public. If you have questions, I encourage you, ask your questions. Our city staff are going to write down all of the questions, and after everyone in the public has had a chance to speak. We will then, the city staff will then try to answer each of those questions one by one. So we are going to answer the questions I can ask, but don't be offended, please, if you have a list of five or six questions. And the city council is not responding one right after the other. So after we hear the staff report, after the council asks their questions of the city staff. And after we hear from members of the public, and after the public's questions are answered to the best we're able to. Then at the, then at the end of the meeting, I'm going to bring it back to council. We will have our discussion, and we will make at least one policy decision on whether we're going to have four or five districts. Uh, then we get further direction based upon what we have heard here today. And what we have heard from members of the public that have emailed us or otherwise communicated to us, okay? So with that, uh, Madam City Clerk, can you please establish a quorum?
Councilwoman Flagger.
Here.
Councilmember Lee Yang.
Here.
Councilwoman Beto's here, Vice Mayor Davy.
Here.
Mayor Winder.
Here.
Thank you very much, and with that, I will turn it over to our attorney for staff.
If you can't, okay.
Sorry, but but just before you get going, uh, some of you already heard me say this, but there, if you plan to to speak today. There are comment cards at the front of the, a- a- at the entrance to the room. We request, you don't have to do it, but we request that you fill out a comment card and give it to the city clerk. It just makes it easier for us to keep track of everyone who's spoken, uh, we have an accurate record of all things. So, thank you very much for your operation.
Good morning, everyone, can you hear me all right? Instead of being at the podium, I think. Take a look at all of you while we're going through this presentation. My name is Simran Mahal, I'm an attorney for Hanson Bridged, and I serve as special counsel to the city related to this districting process. And so, as the mayor had mentioned, uh, the main items that we're going to be addressing today related to the. Or are related to the four districts and the at-large mayor, um, or the five districts. And then we're also going to be discussing what communities of interest are. And that's where we're really going to be looking for, um, input from you all. Related to what you believe are the communities of interest that should be kept together. When our consulting demographer is going to be, um, drawing maps for the city. Um, so I'm just going to go through a brief presentation here related to, uh, what communities of interest are. I know there's been a lot of questions related to what this term means, and so, um, hopefully at the end of the presentation, you all will understand what that term means. And then we can discuss a little bit more about what the actual communities of interest are in the city. Okay, so, um, here's just a brief preview of what we'll be going over. Um, at the first meeting, our demographer had given, uh, a much longer presentation related to the districting process. But, um, just so everyone's on the same page here, we're going to talk about what districting is. Uh, what the districting criteria are. And then the main focus of our discussion today will be the communities of interest, and we're going to talk about how you all can get involved in that. And, um, we'll, I'll give you a little bit of information of related to the Los Altos census data. And, um, we'll also be talking a little bit about the public hearing schedule and, uh, what the next events and next steps will be. All right, so, districting is the initial process of creating election district. Um, and so that's going to determine who is going to be able to run for office. Because, uh, each council member must live within the boundaries in order to qualify for election for that district. And then it's also going to relate to who votes in the election, because only voters. Within that district will be able to vote for their council member. It is not going to determine how, uh, a district decides to govern. Um, there is definitely a perception that if the council member of a given district is only going to be able to represent the interests. Of those constituents within that district. But we have seen countless agencies in different cities where the different council members are still working to represent the city's interests as a whole. And then it's also not going to determine how the services or relationships between the district and the public are managed. Um, you still have the ability to go to your city council, to your city manager, um, in order to talk to them about whatever needs there are within the city. And then in terms of the overall organization and the administrative aspect of the city, that's not going to change. So, uh, the Fair Maps Act establishes the criteria that are required to be considered when we are going to be developing the district boundaries. And so each district should be relatively equal in size, and that relates to, uh, the number of people in that district, not the citizens of that district. Uh, each district should be contiguous, so the districts should not, uh, hop or jump across natural or man-made boundaries. And I'm going to show you a map of basically what that looks like, where, um, districts are not contiguous versus when they are. Uh, the main focus of the discussion today will be the communities of interest. Um, so I'm going to skip over that for a second. And then, fourth criteria is that there should be easily identifiable and understandable lines following these natural and man-made boundaries. And then our goal is also to keep the districts compact as far as their appearance and then their function. So what is equal population? Um, this has been the subject of both, uh, mainly federal litigation, although it has come up, but related to the C D R A as well. Uh, the population equality is based on the number of people in the district as opposed to, uh, the citizens or the voters within that district. And then, uh, under the C D R A, a ten percent deviation is presumed equal. So, um, there have been other cases of where the litigation mainly surrounds whether or not the, um, districts are equal enough in population. But the courts have established that a ten percent deviation is all right. The second criteria is this contiguous, um, nature of the district, so the districts should not hop or jump. And so I'm going to show you an example, and, uh, I think this is the city of Martinez. And to be fair, I believe this map was drawn before the Fair Maps Act, uh, became effective. So they didn't have these established criteria to look at when they were drawing maps. But if you see here, um, in relation specifically to the blue and the purple districts. Um, you see that the purple district has quite a bit of gaps between this kind of island in the middle. And then the other side of the district over there on the top left. So this is not something that's contiguous. Here we have a map, uh, this is actually the city of Davis, and this was after the Fair Maps Act had been passed. You can see here that, uh, each of the districts are contiguous and that they don't hop or skip in order to create their district lines. I'm going to skip over the communities of interest part now, since we're going to be addressing that in more detail later. Um, the fourth criteria is that the lines should be identifiable and easily understandable. So when we were looking at the Davis map previously, uh, the part that was highlighted yellow here, just go back. That is a railroad, and so the city decided that that was a man-made boundary that should be respected when we're drawing these districts. And then we also want to keep the districts compact in terms of their appearance and function. If we look back on the, uh, city of Martinez map, that was not particularly compact, it was kind of spread out and sneaky throughout the whole city. Versus if we look at the city of Davis one, those were, uh, much larger blocks in terms of the districts. This is another good example, I believe. This might be. Well, it's hard to say, I'm not sure, um, but in any case, you can see the difference between the map on the left versus the map on the right, um, in terms of what, what compactness means. And so now we're going to talk about, uh, communities of interest. So a community of interest is a population that shares a common social or economic interest. And that should be included within a single election district for the purposes of fair and effective representation. And so these are the most, uh, common characteristics of a community of interest, they will have a shared public policy concern. Um, for example, a community of interest might be, uh, commuters, they obviously have an interest related to how the city handles commuting. If they're taking public transit, if there's parking available, so they have that shared interest. Um, another, uh, community of interest might be, uh, people who care about, um, public safety concerns or public health concerns, environmental concerns within the city. Another could be, uh, housing, a group of residents may have a particular viewpoint related to housing or, or transportation. Uh, there are cultural districts relating to, uh, languages spoken by a particular group, they may inhabit a particular area of the city. Uh, they might have shared socioeconomic characteristics, um, and they could have shared histories, historical districts are also another community of interest often. So these community of, uh, communities of interest are going to be the building blocks of each of the districts, which is why it's so important that we hear from you all today. About what you believe are the communities of interest here in the city. And, uh, this is a subjective question, because it's going to vary from city to city. Some city might have a particular community of interest that does not exist in another city, right? And so, uh, under the Federal Voting Rights Act, the communities that are often covered are Latinos, Asian Americans, and African Americans. And while it's important that the communities of interest, uh, include race, they cannot be the predominant factor in drawing district boundaries. Um, I gave a few examples earlier in terms of what are typical communities of interest. Um, here's like an additional list, I know sometimes people have a hard time figuring out, you know, what is my community of interest? And so, uh, taking a look at these bullet points might help you consider what that is here in the city for you. Uh, could be historical communities, ethnic areas, or cultural amenities. Uh, religious facilities, often churches or synagogues, in a particular area of town may be, um, more predominantly, um, focused on that. And, uh, language is spoken is often another common community of interest. Uh, neighborhoods, which may have to do with, uh, you know, children of a certain, uh, area attending a certain school or frequently, uh, going to a park in that area. You have, uh, economic opportunity zones, often downtown areas which have more businesses, uh, will be a district. Uh, tourism areas, uh, outdoor recreation areas, you often have like the hillside of a particular, um, city being one community or a district. Uh, versus not, uh, downtown or urban areas, creative arts communities, if there are any, uh, arts districts in town, that might be considered a, a community of interest here. Uh, another thing I want to talk about is what is not considered a community of interest. So when we are talking about establishing the district boundaries, we are not going to be considering political party affiliation. We are not going to be considering, uh, incumbents, and we are not going to be considering political candidates. Uh, another thing is, uh. Let's say someone is left-handed, they might say, you know, I'm left-handed, that really affects my life being a left-handed person, and so I want to establish a community of interest or district. Uh, based on left-handed people. However, one of, a community of interest around that would not be geographically focused in any type of area, presumably they would be spread out the entire city. So where it cannot be tied locationally, we will not be able to consider that type of group to be a community of interest. And so when we're talking about communities of interest today, um, we're going to be mainly talking about these three questions. And the demographer and the city council and staff, um, when you talk about communities of interest, we're going to be looking at. Is the community that you guys are talking about, does it have a shared culture, a certain characteristic or bond? That requires us to keep that community together. Um, is the community geographic in nature? Are, are we able to draw district boundaries that are compact and contiguous so that we can keep that group together? And then, uh, finally, we would like to hear from you about how you describe that community's relationship with the city of Los Altos. Um, one important aspect about keeping a community of interest together would be related to the fact that there are policy decisions on a city level. Or by the elected officials that would affect that community interest such that it's important to keep them together. And so in terms of how, uh, operationally that will work is, we'll, we will obviously hear from you all today. Um, if you don't feel comfortable presenting your testimony, uh, today, you can also provide, uh, input on the community of interest form, which is available online. Um, I believe that you can also submit those forms in person. Um, the city's website also has a map of the city of Los Altos that is divided by census blocks. And so you can either, uh, you know, draw your preferred districts on the map and submit it online or, or submit it in person as well. And then the city's website has additional information related to this districting process. This was the, uh, this is an example of the map that I discussed, we might have been talking here, um, we don't today, but, uh, it's available online. This is the city of Los Altos. And then this is just a couple of data points related to the census and the population, voting age population in the city. And so today we will have a public hearing number two, where we're going to be eliciting public comment related to the communities of interest in the city. As well as this issue of, uh, four versus five districts. And then, um, after we're able to review the comments related to which communities of interest you would like to keep together. Our consulting demographer is going to take all your input and begin drawing draft maps. So that on August twenty eighth, we will have, uh, a few maps to consider that they've drawn. And at that point, again, you're, um, welcome to provide public comment as to whether or not you think the demographer got it right or not. And, um, he will be able to draw a new set of maps, and we'll have that considered as well before the final October eighth meeting, in which there'll be a vote on those maps.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. And I think the council, of course, already knows they can answer this question, but just so everyone in the room knows as well. Even though districts are tenderly anticipated to be adopted on October eighth. For this upcoming election, the three city council seats that, that are up for election will still be citywide, correct?
Right, the, um, the first election, which there'll be, um, a vote on the actual districts will be in twenty twenty six, and then the final will be in twenty twenty eight.
Okay, thank you. Um. And then, question for staff, and I suspect you're going to have to talk to our, our, uh, demographer about this, but. Is there a way to get an interactive, uh, map, mapping tool as opposed to just having the, the paper copy?
We can check on that.
Okay, thank, and I, I, I have some other thoughts about this, but I'll, I'll say that for when the council has. Um, I will look to, to my colleagues, does anyone have any questions for staff?
Go first, and then I'll go. Thank you, Mayor, and, um, and good to our special counsel on this item, great presentation, thank you. And thanks to everybody for showing up on this early Saturday morning, happy to see so many people show up this morning. Just a couple of questions, um, I'm going to start with a communities of interest question. Um, just so I understand, because some of these features, as I read them, Samrin, appear to be point in time. You know, and I'm wondering if that matters. Um, because if today or this year or over the next two years, X is a community of interest, because that's top of mind for everybody in that community. But it's something that will change in five years, does that matter?
Yes, so, a very good question. And so what often happens is that when a city will initially draw district maps, they will consider the communities of interest in the city at that time. And then the law allows for every ten years, it's the redistricting process which we'll engage in at that time. Um, to consider what the communities of interest are and how they have changed. And so typically, we're relying on the census data which comes out once every, uh, ten years. And so we are kind of limited in terms of our ability to redraw the lines within that ten-year period. Um, however, there are some exceptions, and so, uh, to the extent that maybe the public believes or the city council believes that those maps need to be reconsidered. Then we'll be able to take a look at that code section in the Fair Maps Act to see if it applies.
And that would allow us to reconsider it before the ten-year period, okay? I'm going to ask a follow-up that I was going to ask later on, but let me ask it now based on what you just said. So in the event majority of more decides to go with the five districts. And two years in or four years into a five district process, we realize it would have been better to do four districts and an at-large mayor. At what point would we have an opportunity to change them? Or vice versa?
Yeah, so, one of the criteria that, uh, the city may be able to rely on is establishing independent redistricting commission. To make that switch and make more, rather, make that determination, whether it's warranted to go from four-one to five or vice versa. And so, uh, that process is, um, it requires city council independence. And so, uh, the public would be charged, uh, well, I'm not sure if it's, I'll, I'll have to look back closely on that, but. Essentially, what happens is there's an independent redistricting commission that is appointed, and there's an application process in which the public submits applications. And there's interviews, um, in order to make sure that this, uh, commission is truly independent. And then they will engage the question of whether or not they believe that it's warranted to go from five to four-one or the vice versa.
It's a clarifying question, follow-up. Just a quick, a follow-up clarification question, my understanding was that whether we use an independent commission or not. The city wouldn't be able to change any of the district boundaries or go from five to four-one or four-one to five. Until after a census, so we would be locked in until every, every, every year with a zero added, is that, is that, is that correct?
So that's generally the case, except that there is this exception which allows the independent redistricting commission to make a determination. Whether or not such a change is warranted, so even if they were charged with their, you know, task or question of evaluating that. They may ultimately determine that it's not warranted, given population shifts or community of interest shifts.
Okay, I didn't realize that, thank you.
And just two more questions, Mayor, thank you.
That's the clarifying check question on that.
Sure.
So if you talked about the independent, um, redistricting commission, can you clarify? Um, the process of establishing that, like. Would they have to be representatives from each district, or? When you say they put in their applications, then is it an appointment through the council? And how do we make sure that it is, um, like you said, independent to make sure it's represented in the whole city?
So, so this law is really new, it just got passed in January first of this year. And so we have very little guidance in terms of how those commissioners would be appointed. Except to look at the independent redistricting commissions at the state level. And so the way that that application process works is it's completely independent of the city council. Um, so, applications are solicited, there are several rounds of interviews, and then ultimately the commissioners are selected.
I hope.
Um, well, on the state level, I believe it is the Secretary of State's office, so it would probably be something that the staff undertakes at the local level.
You can, are you okay with your stuff?
Great, thanks, Samrin. On the. Four districts at-large mayor, can you describe again? How the at-large mayor would be elected separate from the four district council members?
Uh huh, so, so that would be a separate vote related to the mayor, and, um. One of the things that's actually a, a pro that we consider when we're talking about four versus one. Is that, um, the residents are able to essentially have two votes, they're able to vote for their local council member, and then they're also able to vote for the mayor.
Great, thank you. And then, last question for now, Mayor, because I've been asked this question, so assuming everything moves forward on schedule, we get the final vote in October. What happens, if anything, with regards to districting? Between the final vote where we establish districting and the election, the first election in November twenty twenty six. Will the election look different for our districts? You know, how will the election look in twenty twenty six with regards to district elections? And is there any process, steps that take place between a final vote and the election in November twenty twenty six?
Do you mean that in terms of how it will look to the residents on the ballot, um, or?
Yes, because they want to understand the difference, you know, when it's time for them to vote November twenty twenty six, what will be different?
Right, so, um, if one of your districts will be on the ballot to select the council member, you will see that there. And so instead of just voting as we typically vote for one person, um, at, at large. You will vote for the person that is eligible to run within your district.
So they wouldn't see the candidates for the other districts on their ballot, they would only be presented. It's obvious that registrar voters will have their address and know which district applies to them.
May I call it on that? So as a follow-up, let's, let's make it excruciatingly clear of what you're talking about. So if you're in a district that is not up for election, you will have. I'll ask it as a question, will you then have zero opportunity to vote in that election?
No, you would still be voting at-large, so will, is it three districts that are converting first or two?
No, well, I'm, I'm saying if you're, if we've got, yeah. Fast forward, we're in districts. Your district is not up for a council election, it's still a four-year term. So if you're in a district that is not up for a councillor to be elected. Do you have any vote that year?
I can pick that one up, I'm Melissa Thurman, the city clerk for the city and the elections official, so how that would work. In two thousand twenty-six, let's suppose we have, uh, two seats that are district. For instance, uh, let's say this particular neighborhood is one district, the people that are living in. The people that are living in this neighborhood that are registered voters will receive a ballot to vote for a candidate in this district. So what you won't see is if somebody running is John Doe for this district, you probably won't see John Doe signs all over the city, because they'll be concentrated in this district, because this is where the voters that will be voting them in office live. And so um when on your ballot, if you live outside of this district and there's nobody running in your district, because you already have that seat filled, we won't see anybody to vote for for council. So it will only be concentrated to the voters within the particular district that the candidate is running.
If there's other measures, you'll get to vote on county measures, state measures, you'll get the whole ballot, but you may not get your
Correct. You may still see judges and, you know, senators and president even on some of your ballots, but you for Los Altos specific, unless it's a ballot measure that is citywide, ballot measures will not be affected by district. Um, it only is affecting the candidate race for elections.
So let me just, I I think this is an important point. So when once we're fully in districts, a district will vote once every four years for a single council seat. Is that correct? No matter how many candidates for that seat there may be.
That is correct. The only caveat I would make is if there's a vacancy that occurs halfway through a term for a particular district, there may be another vote in that district, but typically, there's a four year candidate seat for the city council.
Mayor, can I follow up? Thank you, um, City Clerk Thurman. Um, I actually want to go twenty 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 six, twenty twenty eight, twenty thirty, because there's a difference, and I think that's what Samrin was talking about. So in twenty twenty six, if we move forward, as we're discussing today, and only and presumably we do five districts. And two of the five will be up for a district election in twenty twenty six. For residents in one of those two districts, will they also see on their ballot the names of the three at large seats? Resuming, so for example, we could do hypothetically, A, B, C gets elected this year for four year terms, right? I'm gonna use and D and E, they're termed out twenty twenty six. Those are the two seats that are now vacant and counseled. And therefore you have two districts that will be on the ballot. But it doesn't necessarily mean that it's within the district of the two termed out elected officials, correct?
Correct, because um according to the Fair Maps Act, we can't uh unnecessarily cut someone's term short simply because we're transitioning to district elections. So um I think we would have to confirm this as to how the election ballot would actually look. But I believe your understanding is correct in that if you live within a district, you will vote for that uh council member that is up for election within that district. And then otherwise, all other residents will be voting at large until twenty twenty eight, when it is the uh their opportunity to vote district elections.
We got the vice we had a follow up question. So in twenty twenty six, my colleague uh Lisa will be termed out. And under the current rules ineligible to run in that election for for the seat that she now occupies. So we will have one open seat and I will be on uh uh up for reelection as well. So uh the question I think is really, how do you treat um which districts come up first, so to speak, when you've got a situation where uh one incumbent is up for reelection and one seat is 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 open? Would we um determine, or can we not, since because we're not allowed to consider incumbency? Would we look at it and say, okay, you know, Pete's up for reelection in twenty twenty six, so his district is therefore one of the districts that's coming up in twenty six? How do you reconcile not taking into account incumbency when you in fact have an incumbent that may wanna be reelected?
Right, so we cannot consider the incumbency as a factor at all. Um, determining the sequence uh or the order of elections is often something that we consider at the board public meeting. And um historically in the past, what has happened is once we have maps which address the different communities of interest within the city, um in furtherance of the CVRA, in order to give potentially those uh communities that have been marginalized or have less of a voice, it they have the ability to um uh have the first vote in the district election, that that is the preference. And so that's the way that we've done it in the past for other cities.
That's from Liang.
Okay, so what if the next election, you say this district is up and you have two council members that decided that district. Then the other council members fill the other seats, right? So they're forced to run against each other, even though they didn't meet their full terms?
Well, um, every council member would be able to uh sit for the full term. Um, you can't cut anyone's term short. Is that what you're asking? Yeah. So it would be unaffected by the transition to district elections.
Okay, then the other question is, in the past, the last meeting where we were discussing districts, it was stated that five districts was a beneficial method for CVRA. Could you explain that?
Right, so under the CVRA, um, any election system which is partially at large, which is what which is what would happen if you had four districts plus an at large mayor mayor, is uh, you know, more of a risk from a legal perspective, rather than just having five districts. And so um one of the things that we were talking a little uh earlier about was kind of the pros and cons of what four versus one versus five would be. In terms of the five districts, it's definitely preferential from a legal perspective. It's the most safe route that you can take. Um, although I'm not aware of any city being challenged under the four plus one uh uh method. And in terms of how you have your current city council set up with a rotational mayor in order to preserve that process and um, you know, just make it easier to understand for the public. If you were to continue to rotate within the five districts, that would potentially make that process easier to understand from a public perspective as well.
Um, the other um point that you made earlier was about the um equal population and there is a ten percent deviation because of the numbers in our cities and um keeping everything um ten percent or less. Doesn't that kind of already dictate how many districts you're gonna have? Because that kind of helps to guide as well. Because if you ordered, the less districts you have, it it's more room to create a higher percentage of deviation, which goes against what is recommended.
Well, there would be uh the deviation between the district and so uh in terms of how much of a difference that would make between four versus five, um, I I don't think that would make much of a difference.
Okay, my other question is, you said that when you talk about how to determine communities of interest, you said it had to be based on as well being able to place it based on location. So when we talk about um that, can it also be a factor of finances? So because if you talk about the amount of funding that is provided towards various districts and you can tie it to a percentage of funding that perhaps goes to certain districts, that can be a determinant of community of interest, because that can be tied to special areas.
Well, I think it would be more from the perspective that that community of interest might have certain needs from the city that they may claim are unmet. And so that would be a community of interest as opposed to um the way that funds are allocated throughout the city.
Right, so because of the lack of funding, their 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 needs are unmet.
That that might be the perceived community of interest, correct?
Okay, great. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. I I thought of a question and it kind of picks up on Councilmember Li Yang's question. So community interests, which we're largely gonna focus on, defined by shared public policy concerns. And paradoxically, the law says we have to go through this process if we have polarized voting, but we can't take ethnicity into account despite the fact that that's what's determining um the polarization. But so you mentioned two things, the the uh shared interest can be any number of things. And yet the the districts will essentially require, or at least strongly prefer contiguous, and I'm gonna call them tidy boundaries, boundaries that make sense. So those interests and communities of interest may not fit into a tidy boundary. So how do we prioritize? Um, it sounds like the district, the the tidy boundaries and contiguous is a higher priority than the interests, or is that not correct? Can you explain how one balances those potentially competing factors?
Right, so the Fair Maps Act establishes the criteria and those are ranked. So um you will have communities of interest being considered before, um, I think it's the natural and manmade boundaries and then the compactness of the district.
I mean, it's all, it's just, it's not very logical.
I I I understand what you're saying.
Sorry, I'll save that for discussion. Wipe that from the record.
The better answer I can provide, except for the fact that when the demographer is going to be gathering how to draw these lines, he's gonna look at those prime criteria and just rank them in order when it's wrong in the districts.
Sorry, it it just, I just have to rethink what you said.
Thank you. Before I open up to the public, I actually do have one other question I thought of. We don't run our own elections. The the county registrar of voters obviously runs our elections. Are we to, are are there any constraints in how our boundaries can be drawn based upon the abilities of the registrar of voters? Or once we establish our our boundaries, we give that to the ROV and the ROV does whatever they have to do in terms of adjusting precincts, things like that to accommodate our needs?
Yes, so once this process is completed, the maps are provided to the county registrar of voters so that they keep track of the district boundaries as well, so that when, because they submit the ballots, they send the mail, the vote by mail ballots out to registered voters, um, they will know who within each district should receive um the ballots to vote.
Just a real quick, I thought there was a a stated preference to maintain boundaries that are consistent with with precincts as well.
I'm not aware of any such.
I don't think we want to divide the precincts if we can avoid it. I do think that there's some precedent for that, but that's fine.
Okay, um, so with that, I wanna echo my colleagues in saying thank you very much for the presentation. Uh, and I want to thank my colleagues for asking, I think, some very important questions that I hope has uh maybe uh anticipated some of the questions that we're about to get from members of the public. Uh, I am gonna open the floor now to public comment. Um, I, before I do that, I just want to clarify that the majority, if not the entirety of the council, has gone on record as not wanting to do this. Uh, I think if we were left to our druthers, we would not be moving to district elections, or we'd prefer to leave all council seats at large. That being said, we also believe that the law compels us to take the actions that we are taking right now. And we are committed to doing it. Um, but to the extent that I have, I already heard some some members of the public expressing displeasure that we are doing this. Uh, your displeasure is felt and and echoed probably in extremity from members of this council. Um, but we are going forward with this. We have committed to do this because we believe that we are compelled to do so by law. Uh, and and given that, I now want to turn it over to members of the audience, because the single most important aspect of this process is getting public input. Um, I I lived in the southern part of the city for ten to twelve years. I've lived in the north part of the city for a couple of years. And and that's given me some perspectives, but I haven't every part of the city and there are little micro communities throughout, and we need to hear from you, we need to know what those are so that we can let our demographer know and and get the best possible maps drawn up uh that we possibly can. Okay, uh, with that, Madam City Clerk, I will turn it over to you.
The first speaker is Kirby Hanson.
I'm gonna go over here, or I can look at everybody. First of all, well, I got, it looks like I'm backing up to uh way before what you're talking about. Because you are talking about a solution to a problem that I don't think exists. I don't see that there is a problem at all. Uh, I would be interested in seeing a hands of those who feel that there is a problem that we should be taking this kind of action for. Does anybody think that we should be? Even one? No one? And yet we're taking these actions, which I think are unnecessary. I don't believe there's a problem. Uh, I live in North Los Altos. We have on our street a number of Asian Americans. If I am to believe the Los Altos Town Prior, this problem that's being addressed is because Asian Americans supposedly are being disenfranchised in Los Altos. Did I hear a dissent? It's not the case. I think that's what the case is, and I don't see that. I see on our street, there are several Asian Americans. And uh Asian Americans in general, I think, have blended very well into our community. And I don't think that there are any areas that are going to be singled out by a redistricting measure, uh, which will uh obviously be more divisive than it will be uh inclusive. Furthermore, any redistricting that we take, I think, will be subject to further questioning by uh smart lawyers, who will say, you didn't do a good job. Now we're gonna sue you and you must pay us thirty thousand dollars of protection money, so we won't take you to court. Well, that's what we're already doing, is paying thirty thousand dollars of protection money to keep uh Mr. Shankman from taking us to court. I don't think we should do it. I think we should fight it. I think that the lawyers, there must be some good lawyers in Los Altos that support this support not doing all this stuff. And why don't they get together and come up with a good case? I don't think Mr. Shankman actually has standing. He has this uh group, which he calls the Southwest Voter Registration Education Project, which is a Texas-based organization based on uh registering Latinos, not Asian Americans at all. Asian Americans aren't mentioned at all on their website. This is the height of absurdity. I think this is an Alice in Wonderland uh crazy situation. And I for one think it's a mistake.
Speaker is Connie Mary Otini.
I'm sorry, before you begin, you're you're welcome to stand wherever you like, obviously, the mic moves around. There is a recording of the meeting, so if you stand there, your your just, your back is gonna be to the recording. No one will be able to see you. Just, I just want you to be where.
It's their problem.
We see them better there than there.
Oh, well, I can, this is.
Maybe you do see it behind the podium.
But then I'm not seeing anyone out here.
Oh, yeah, but this is fine if you stay here.
Uh, I've been here fifty five years or more, actually. Uh, very, very.
Very, very pro-Los Altos and council for so many decades. I'm very proud of it, raising the four children on my own through the school district. But my biggest concern is getting the person in that so-called district that wants to be on the board. I mean, it's not, if you have gray hair, forget it. We shouldn't be voting, you know, for that in a way just because you want to be alive and involved a lot with it. Now, I know it sounds bad, but everyone here, including myself, has it. But younger people would be nice to get involved with the council. I know years ago, we did have one, but it was different to that. But so that would be a concern. And do we really, I've asked around, and I'm in South Los Altos also. No one wants to be on the city council. So how are we going to vote for even more than one that would be on the city council as that option? Because I agree, I don't think we need it to change as it is. So that, that's my big concern. If there was different districts, I know the school districts are critical. All of mine, of course, in South Los Altos, on the other side of Three Vine Avenue is where we're located. Went to Oak and Block and Montview High School. And, and I realized that this is the Cupertino school district. But I think is an important thing to say, okay, what qualifies a district? And this is critical too. And I'm very involved with Cupertino, not in the school district, but I belong to the senior center Cupertino of Memorial Park. And it's, it's wonderful. I'm very proud of our communities that we are in. So if there's anything that we can do to fight that guy from Southern California, I believe Shankman, sort of similar to the one that was doing, you know, the bathrooms that weren't accessible and all that. And all the money he made, it finally got in trouble because he wasn't paying his tax, income taxes, probably. So anyway, that's, that's basically what I'm for. And let's, let's be happy. I know I have a philosophy of not worrying about two years and three years and 10 years from now. I want to live for today and behave for today and be involved for today. We don't know what next year is going to be for any of us, no matter how old or young we are. That's it.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tony DiNiro.
I concur with both of the previous speakers, particularly Kirby Hanson. I would just like to add that district elections are almost inevitably going to create conflicts among the different districts. We will have competition for the scarce city resources. I, for one, would be willing to chip in a bit to have fun to soothe this guy.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Freddie Pila.
Hello, thank you so much. I was wondering if we could have just a short summary of the advantages and disadvantages of four districts versus five districts. I think it's difficult to make a decision when you really don't have a lot of information about the pros and cons of the system. Also, my other question is, since the reason for doing this is supposedly, was said, a lack of enfranchisement for Asian residents of Los Altos, what happens if, when we look at the demographics of Los Altos, we find that our, our city is pretty evenly, that different ethnic groups are evenly distributed amongst all of the areas of Los Altos? Then how do you decide who is the marginalized district who gets to go first in 2026? What do we do if no one decides to run for a district? My understanding is, is that whoever is on the city council at the time will then appoint somebody. So what do you do? Line up everybody in the district and say, okay, you have the short straw. You get to serve the short straw. I mean, I think that's, when we're talking about representation, that's got to be the worst of all situations, is to have no one want to run and then have someone appointed that nobody voted for. I would not want to be that person. And I don't think anybody wants that person representing them. This is just a horrible situation. I agree, this is a terrible situation, and I don't know how we got here. I think this is just one more example of laws that are not well thought out, and these are the consequences. But here we are. Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Pila. I'll look over to staff and invite you to answer the questions now if you'd like, if you're able to.
I think the four versus one pros and cons is top of mind. So as I mentioned earlier, there, the only con to the four versus one is that there is some legal risk involved with that because any election that is at large, if it's partially a part of a districted system, is considered to be not in furtherance of the CBRA. Also, in terms of the current system, how we have set it up in terms of a rotational mayor as opposed to voting for the mayor, there might be some perceived confusion related to how that works. In terms of the pros of having the mayor, it's nice to have someone who's like the visible leader of the city. And I know that there is a lot of concern amongst the residents that we're not going to have one voice for the city. It will be very segmented across the, so that might be a pro. The five districts, it doesn't necessarily have to be the case that each council member is solely focused on the individual needs of the residents within that district. That district might believe that it's important for their council member to represent the needs of the whole city. And so if you have all council members with that sort of thought process in mind, then you won't have the issues with each district being so segmented.
Could you also share information? Because if people want to perhaps pursue litigation, can we share information regarding cost of litigation that other cities have undertaken?
So there have been a variety of cities that have decided to fight the CBRA lawsuit. And it can range anywhere from a couple hundred thousand dollars if they decide to settle with the plaintiff's lawyer early on. Or we have the case of Santa Monica, which is upwards of $20 million because they litigated that case all the way to the Supreme Court, and now it's back at the trial court. So legal fees of a million to $3 million is not, you know, out of the ordinary by any means.
Is it comparable in size to ours?
So like, I, I don't want to go into a back and forth when we ask your public, we have your public comments. I'm going to invite you to answer that question. I, I do want to say this, though. As a policy, whenever the city receives a credible threat of litigation, the city council moves into a closed session to discuss it. And it is a matter of public record that the city council has had two closed sessions so far to discuss the possible litigation aspects. California law does not allow us to disclose to the public what happened in those closed sessions. None of the council members can do that, and none of the staff members can do that either. However, I can't say that in open session, the council has elected to move forward with districting the city. That, that process is moving forward because the council has already committed to doing that. As I said at the beginning of the meeting, a supermajority, if not the entirety of the council regrets that we are doing that. But based upon the circumstances that we face ourselves in and the information that the council has, we made a decision that we felt was in the best interest of the city, taking into account all of the circumstances that would affect our different courses of action. We, we, we are moving forward with districting. We hear you that this is not what you want. This is not what we want. This is what we feel compelled to do, and we are going to go forward in a competent, professional, and serious manner. Even though this is very uncomfortable for all of us, it's so important that we hear more from you about where you think these communities of interest might be and to the extent that you feel you have enough information, whether you would prefer five districts or four districts plus a mayor at large. Thank you. One important detail to add. We could fight, but we would probably still lose, right? So our legal counsel has engaged in this kind of the city's outside counsel has engaged in this kind of a fight before they have experience with Shankman. And unfortunately, we don't see an indication that we are likely, even remotely likely, to prevail in court. So if it were a fight we thought we could win, we might have entertained that more seriously.
Explain, I just, the four versus ones and the mayor being elected at large, that mayor has the same powers and duties as the councilman. Yes, they, we, it would not be for any strong mayor form of government. The person would be elected, they'd have the same voting rights, the same responsibilities as the other council members. And would, the one mayor would not have veto powers. It's just like how you rotate now. I just wanted to clarify, the four one doesn't make the mayor a super mayor or have superpowers.
Correct, yes.
Just so people understand that. It wouldn't be a strong mayor form of government. No.
Okay, let's move on to the next speaker, please.
Mayor, would you like us to address the rest of the questions?
Oh, yes, please, thank you.
So the next question was, what happens if we find that the different ethnic groups are distributed evenly throughout the city?
So there was the recent Supreme Court decision in Pico versus Santa Monica. And so that holds that the inability to draw a majority-minority district is not one of the main issues in like solving a CBRA problem. And so that may be the case. I'm not sure. I'm not the demographer. I haven't looked at the data exactly. But communities of interest go beyond race and ethnicity. And while they cannot be the single most factor that is considered, it is a factor to be considered pursuant to the federal law.
And then I think the last one was, what happens if no one runs for a certain district?
And so the city council would be charged with appointing a council member to represent that district. From that district, yes.
Would the council have to appoint someone, or could the council call for a special election?
I think they would be able to do either. Either call for an election or if there is still no one who would be willing to participate, ultimately, that's an appointment.
Okay, thank you.
It would be like a vacancy. They would have so many days to call and pay for a special election or appoint. Like when we've had council members resign.
No, I, I, I understand. I, I know my preference, and I suspect all my colleagues' preference, would always be to have a council seat filled by an elected people. So I just wanted to make sure that if, if no one runs in one particular election, there's an opportunity for the council to try to do better outreach and find candidates to run as opposed to simply having no other choice but to select someone other than.
Speaker is John Fennell.
Since you asked grand food, or five versus four, I would go with five for the reasons that the attorney has outlined. Let me, let me ask for clarification on the elections in 2026 and 2028, because I think that's confusing. Why would we not hold an election in 2026 for a new city council based on the five districts? And maybe that has something to do with incumbency. But if we don't do that, I think it's going to be very confusing. And we might end up in a situation, you've got three or even four council members living in the same district in 2026. And that invites a lawsuit from people in a district that's not represented. So that would be my question that I would want to know. And how, why, why aren't we going to do that? The second thing is, if nobody runs from a particular district, which city council picks the representative, the outgoing city council or the new one coming in? And then my third one would be, how, how does term limits go to work in this district situation? Particularly if it's staggered, where we have a staggered election, 2026 and 2028. That's it.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Roberta Phillips.
The first question was, why not hold, I think it was, why not hold in 2026 hold elections for all five districts?
And it's, as you mentioned, that we cannot consider incumbency. It might seem, you know, common sense for those seats that are up for election to just have those ones be the first ones to district. But because we're not able to consider incumbency as a factor, we're not able to do it.
We'll also have council members who are in the middle or over for your term that would be cut short if we hold elections for all five. The next question was, if, if there's nobody that runs, which council picks the, which council makes the appointment? Is it the old council or the new council?
It would be whoever is sitting on the current council at that time to make that decision. It wouldn't be a matter of older, new council. It would be whoever is currently elected and sitting is the seated body at the time that would make all of those decisions.
So if, if there is a vacancy on the council, that council is the one that makes the decision. So if no one wins in a particular district and a council of five then becomes a council of four, that council of four then decides how to fill the seat.
Correct, the council of four would fill the one vacancy.
In the framework of how the question was asked, I think that it is the new council, the council that is short one member, that will make the determination how to fill the seat.
Correct, whatever council is sitting that has a vacancy would be the one making that decision.
So can I, can I just make it a little bit more clear? City Clerk Thurmond, so November 7th, 2026, I have no idea if that's voting day 2026. For one of the districts, we don't have a candidate, so no one gets elected, no one filed on time, no one did a walk-in or a write-in. No one won November 7th. We will still have the existing council through, I think, that first Tuesday in December. So there's a month there between the election and when we switch councils. Does that council, the old council, as John said, get to choose that vacancy? Or is it the new sworn-in council, December X?
Actually, in that case, no, because there technically would not be a vacancy within that council makeup that you've just described. Because there has to be that official switch over handover in December, that is when the vacancy would occur.
So it's a new council, in his context?
Yes, in this context, we'll go with the new, and yes, the new council would have to make that decision.
And just another clarifying question. So how are we going to choose, well, obviously, they choose the two districts, but we're not supposed to take in incumbency or standing current council members' positions. So when we say 2026, we have two seats districts coming up. How do we choose which two districts? And then afterwards, And then afterwards, um, within the two districts, suppose you have two of the council members sitting on the three seats. Part of that district that's up for election. You wouldn't need an election because you already have someone from that seat or do you look at another district? How do you do that? Do you kinda understand what I'm trying to say?
Yes, I'm not sure I quite understand the second question. Um, but, but as far as the, the first question is concerned, the, the order or the sequence of the elections, um, in the purposes of the CBRA are also, are to prevent this racially polarized voting and to give, um, uh, different communities of interest a voice. And so in terms of ordering, ordering the elections, that would be something to consider. Um, as far as your second question, if you could please clarify that a bit, Mary.
Yeah, go ahead. As you can tell, this is very confusing to all of us, we have as many questions as you all do. So someone I think I'm gonna use, and again, we're not considering incumbency, but I'm just gonna use two of my colleagues because they're up for reelection this year, the mayor and council member Meadows. Assuming, you know, they get elected, they'll be two years into their four year term, twenty twenty six. Is it a factor to consider the fact that council member Meadows lives in one of the districts we draw not to have that district be up for election twenty twenty six?
No, we can't consider incumbency in any way.
So we could, as I, right, so as a council, even though we have council member Meadows reelected and in the second year of her four year term, as a council, we could still pick the district she lives in to be up for election twenty twenty six and we do have two people living in Sally's district. The difference though is Sally's representing at large because she's still finishing her four year term. And this new person would be only representing that district.
Correct.
I wanna add one caveat into what you just said. It, it, it is my hope and frankly, it is my belief that any council member who was elected from a district is going to represent the entire city. And, and yes, that member's constituents will specifically be confined to their geographical district. But the city works best when the council members work as, as a team. Uh, even though the five of us have been elected in citywide elections, uh, we all come from different parts of the city and we work together as a team to make sure that the entirety of the city is, is represented and is, uh, receives its fair share of resources and, and, and otherwise is treated equally. Um, and I, so it's, it's, I, I get it's my hope, but it, it is my belief that anyone who was elected is not just going to be a champion for their district, but their, their constituency will be broader than just the electorate that elected them.
Well, when you were done, I was gonna go on to the next question. Yeah, so then the last question that was asked is, how do term, term limits work? So how will the term?
Um, the term limits was, it was a ballot measure that was passed by the voters and that will not change, so the term limits will remain unless there's a new ballot measure to, um, not have term limits, but that's still valid. So this will not change it, there'll still be two term limits. It will be limited in your district, I guess, for two terms and then you have to sit out for the rules we've been following for years.
Do you wanna clarify that? Oh, I thought you were gonna clarify some.
For real.
So the, me, it seems.
I, I, I'm sorry, just, you are turning on the mic, just we, we make sure we get your phone there. Is it on now?
Yeah, thank you. I have chosen five districts with rotating mayor, which I think then each council member gets his mayor. And the role of the mayor now is to help set the agenda, this will be the council meeting along with the city manager. And I think that we're all comfortable with that and it's a fair way to go. So I prefer that rather than having, and I think having an, uh, an at-large mayor really will confuse things a lot more. And, you know, um, the people who are really interested and contribute large amounts of money, could put up their mayor and the rest of the town. If, uh, would not have sort of equal financial backing. So that concerns me. As far as the community of interest, I actually give up a little direction of comments in city council. And I would like to see the area around North San Antonio Road be considered district. I think it's very different than South San Antonio. So North San Antonio with the post trees that fall gold and from Edith North, because that is a residential area. South San Antonio Road is a business district. The business district actually would like to see more traffic, more feet of the street, more congestion. They, they must think that, um, that would help financially. Where, uh, North San Antonio Road is all residential. And we, we wanna see less traffic. Let the, um, so I, I think that it's, um, something that should be considered when regarding the town as a, as, um, because you, 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 it's, we're living on a major road and have concerns. And we wanna try to keep, um, this, this is a plan that's being proposed to put up five lanes with vertical bollards and for five lines along San Antonio Road, which I think is pretty dangerous. And I think that, uh, the residents who live on that area need to have horse. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Eric Stidley.
Saying all the number of times I've addressed the city council, I come with a one minute, two minute, three minute version of everything I wanna say. So for the first time, I won't have to worry about the, the limitations. These are things, Bobby. Okay, I, I do wanna address the specific questions that you raised, which is number one, how many of, uh, four versus the five districts? And the other is the communities of interest. Um, I join everybody else in thinking that this makes no sense whatsoever, but I'm also a lawyer and I know it doesn't really matter whether it makes any difference at all. Finally, this is what we have to do, so I'd like to do my part in trying to, to make it, make some sense. None at the end of the day, but some sense. I think we should stick with five, not four. The purpose of the, uh, CBRA is to determine how we count votes, not how we govern the city. If we keep governing the city according to the norms and practices that we already have, it will be less disruptive. Everybody will understand where they, how they do things, et cetera. If we switch, we're going to have chaos. Chaos we can control, but we're gonna have to work to control that. So I think sticking with that, um, is the best thing. And one of the things we can do, uh, there's a gentleman here who's gonna talk about charter cities later, is we could consider whether we might wanna have a charter. This would give us an opportunity to work that way and decide if that is a policy we want to adopt. This is an opportunity for us to think as a city about what we want to do going forward. Not worry so much about what happened or why, but how we are now going to operate in the new system. That has to be the priority of the council, it has to be the priority of the city. And that's one way to do that, we could think about it and, and work our way through the options. Uh, and it may take ten years to get there, but we can lay a plan and follow it. And I think we have now have an opportunity to do something that Los Altos has not been very good at over the years, which is thinking not about yesterday, but about next week. So this will, this will be one way, uh, to do that. So the general principle is that of, of the doctors. It's expressed in Latin for some reason, the only doctorate, there's gonna be Latin in every comment I make from now on. Um, which is do no harm. Okay, and I would say to do no harm, we keep with five. Okay, and, and that would be the, the way I would do that. In terms of making districts, Game has a way of saying that if you wanna know what the, the priorities of the council are, look at the budget because the things that we're willing to spend money on are the actual priorities of the city. Taking that same approach, and I look as the person who shows up at every meeting, uh, what people actually talk about when they come here and they complain, there are two interests that predominate overall others, I've said this before, they are trees and parking. That's all anybody in this city seems to want to talk about. Good luck in using that as a way of coming up with a community of interest, but it is, those are at least interests that everybody shares. Okay, and they also represent into the interests and problems that the city does face. It's a shorthand, if you will, for some of those things. I don't know how that helps in doing the communities of interest, but those are the interests that the communities have actually spoken about. I would suggest one thing, however, in a more practical way of looking at this. And that is that, that in drawing lines and cutting up the pie, so to speak, you think about going from north to south rather than east to west. A lot of the lines that you see tend to have a more east-west orientation. In other words, you start Dale Camino Real, you go to Foothill, or you start Equesta and you go to Foothill. You think of that, that as being the line of orientation and the, the district perhaps spreads out a little bit aside. That's just a thought, it's not the way we usually think about the city, but it might be one way to think about how to draw the lines, given that we have no other way to do that than any of us has been able to think of. So that's, that's a, a bug in the air for the demographer and for the council as we think about that. Um, how we think about the direction of the city, I mean, the geographical direction of the city is, I think, an important one. And if we thought about the lines more north, south than east, west, um, it, it might make it easier for us to do what we have to do. Okay, those are my thoughts. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council.
Uh, thank you very much, and Mr. Stanley, I'll make a request of you. Um, when you have a chance, go to the mapping exercise and, and I would, at our next council meeting, I would love to hear from you. Given the constraints of the exercise, how do you think we can do that? Because I, I, I think you make a valid point and I would like to hear more about your ideas on that.
Homework accepted. Yes, of course, labeled eleven.
Okay, um, I'm gonna declare, uh, uh, five or six minute recess, and let's, let's take a short break. Please take your seats again, and we'll get started just a moment. Staff to take their seats like a It's our next speaker.
The next speaker is King Lear.
I had a question, and they're going to answer that later. Uh, first of all, I'd like to compliment everyone in the room. Even though we are extremely POed. This is going very well, it's very good. So I'm, so I'm going to talk about the mayor and the four versus five. And I have heard from other people that make very good statements on that, and I accept that. Uh, the question about how to choose a mayor, four versus five, is to leave it the way it's been the last fifty years. Uh, rotate between the five council members subject to a vote. There's still a vote. The council still has to vote on the mayor and, and in the past, at least once. The mayor was rejected. He was in that order to be put in, but he was rejected by the council because he was disruptive and disrespectful. He cleaned up his act. A year later, he was then elected mayor. So there's a, there's a safety factor which I like. The first rule, we're considering making a change to identify the problem. There is no problem. The informal rule on selecting the mayor works, and there is a confirmation step. The council members still vote. The norm was broken once, and I've talked about that. The present practice is based on mutual respect among council members. In a district format, all five representatives would take turns being mayor. And that is good. Mutual respect for the people in those districts. They all get their mayor. Would electric, would an electric, would an elected mayor bring some significant benefit? Or detriment, that you look at as another way, even though there's no problem. I see no benefit, but there's a downside. We have a city manager form of government. A strong mayor thinking, at least the mayor thinks he's strong because he was elected mayor. Would compete with the city council and with the city manager. That'd be a three-party power going on here. Adding unnecessary confusion and controversy. The position would attract also those seeking power, which aren't necessarily the people we really want. We want people who come to serve the public. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You can answer my question if you can.
There is a question about what would happen if a council member moved during their term from a district? And so, um, because the requirements are for the council member to live within the district boundaries, that would then create a vacancy in that district at that time.
The next speaker is Eli Taub.
This is working, or? Me now? Yes. Well, thank you all. I've been interested in this discussion, and I just want to say impolitely that I regard this law, which we all agree we prefer not to have. It's called the Shark Lawyers Mega Enrichment Act. I don't know how it got to be that. Uh, but that's an issue for us to take up with our members of the state legislature. And oh, by the way, personal disclaimer, I have nothing personally against lawyers. Some of my best friends are lawyers, finally. Um, I'll make the question simple. Uh, first of all, this also applies, this act also, I believe, applies not just to city councils. But to tiny, tiny districts. It could be the Pumpkin Center Extinct Bird Restoration Act. And it would be the same thing. And we're in, in the district, there was a population of ninety-two people. They still have to have district elections. Um, but basically, is there any possibility of this measure being, of this plan? Being put to a citywide referendum so that the people as a whole, in Los Altos, would have a chance to voice their opinions? Uh, on whether they want to do this. You know, it just strikes me as, I just don't understand how in as wonderful a county as this, there haven't been a whole groups of cities, districts, whatever, to band together to fight this and tell the lawyer to go jump in the lake. Uh, and have adequate resources by banding together. So that and citywide referendum. Thank you.
Thank you.
So the reason why we can't take it to the vote of the people is because the city received the letter and it started basically a short clock saying that we have, we have to make this transition in a very short period of time. Because of that, we were not able to meet the requirements to place this on a ballot at a special election or any other, especially not for November of this year. And so that's the short answer as to why we could not take this to the vote of the people as to why this could not. Um, whether or not this should happen.
The, the court precedents are such that even if the residents voted and rejected the change, the courts would overturn it.
The next speaker is Megan Saturday.
Good morning. First of all, thank you so much for taking the practical route and accepting this very bad situation that we're in. We are definitely in the law of unintended consequences. And they are not good. Um, but we can only make them worse by wasting millions of dollars. So thank you for that. Um, I would appreciate any effort that any of you all staff residents are making to inform the legislature that this is a law that is desperately in need of amendment, um, because it's creating, um, negative outcomes. With that said, let's get to the practical matters. Um, I believe we should keep five districts. I believe that is the, uh, there's a number of good reasons for that. One, I think we will attract stronger candidates to each of those districts. Candidates won't be sucked into an at-large, I want to be mayor, um, kind of situation, potentially leaving districts vacant. Uh, residents have already expressed their concerns about not having candidates. So that's one reason. Um, I also think that if you want to keep council members not just focused on their district, but focused on the city at large, then that rotation through the mayor will keep that focus there. So I would strongly, strongly prefer five districts. As far as how do we determine those districts, um, I would be looking at the man-made barriers, um, Large Arterials, Grant, Foothill, San Antonio. Um, but I think what you're going to find is there's a lot of micro-communities. And the question's going to be, how do, what's the affinity between those micro-communities? Um, the Cupertino School District is certainly a micro-community. I would look less at the Los Altos School District only because if you look at those boundaries, they're kind of bizarre. That's my word for them. Um, but still, there's some affinity there. Um, I think that the other affinities I'd be looking for, um, there's, there's, uh, our community assets, um, the parks. As well as, I think there's a, you know, and a group that is, can walk downtown. I can walk downtown, but it takes a really long time. So I just think that, uh, the walkability and where you might walk within your neighborhood. Um, and then aside from downtown, of course, I think there's an affinity around Loyola Corners that should be looked at. So, uh, thank you very much for your work and good luck with the very bad situation. Thank you.
The next speaker is John Baer.
I do like the opportunity for a speech. And for you, the attendees here with
What's the letter of the day? What's the letter of the day?
Uh, I don't know. I, uh, So I continue to believe that, uh, general elections are better than district elections. I think we are actually all in violent agreement. I also believe that there are other forms of election that may be better than district and still workable for the city. And I would encourage the council, once they get through this mess, and it in fact is a mess, that in fact you look at those other alternatives, whether it's proportional right choice voting or some other mechanism. Um, but something that better serves the community. Okay, so the answer to your questions, um, communities of interest, um, there've been a lot of good comments. So what I'm going to say is simply added in of, uh, older, more historic neighborhoods such as University, Orange Hawthorne, Pepper, San Luis. They are different in, in character and tone, um, have different issues around them. Communities that surround downtown. Um, really important, and perhaps some of the other business districts. Communities that are impacted by our arterials, uh, San Antonio, El Camino, El Monte, Grand Road. Um, again, issues around them with regard to traffic, safety. Some of the rezoning that has occurred that will have significant impact. Um, specifically now talking about San Antonio Road, which we have some disagreement. Um, five districts, not four, uh, for all the reasons that have been so noted. I would like to take exception to one comment that was made by staff. Um, when you have the mayor, um, the mayor does have extra power, and that is the power to set the agenda. Um, and that doesn't make it bad, but the fact that that gets rotated through is actually good for everybody in the community. One last observation about this city and how we are all equal, but we're not. We've spent approximately thirty million dollars on a brand spanking new community center. We're about to spend a million dollars on a dog park. That one I still don't understand. Um, my cat is jealous. Um, we're proposing spending millions of dollars on a downtown theater and perhaps a park. And then we have this facility. This is an embarrassment. This is a question of what our priorities are in this community. And I would hope the council would really think long and hard about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Not to be dead horse about this, but, um, the mayor does get to set the agenda or the norms with the city manager. But if there are future agenda items and the council still wants to get an item on the agenda, the council still can't get items on the agenda. The, the mayor does not get to prohibit something from being on the agenda if three wanted on the agenda with a staff report or two wanted on for a discussion. And yes, the mayor does work with the city manager to set that agenda, but I wanted to clarify. The council still has the ability with three to get it on the agenda with the staff report and two for just discussion.
So that, that of course is true, but, but to be fair, the mayor does have a lot of influence as to when something that a majority of the council may want to come forward. And we have seen in the past, uh, three or more members of the council want an agenda item talked about, and a mayor has kicked that out to another council. So, so yet, but both the speaker and the city attorney are right. It depends how the mayor decides to move forward.
The next speaker is Steve Chesson.
Uh, good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council Members, Presidents of Los Altos. My name is Steve Chesson. I'm President of Californians for Electoral Reform. And despite what Mr. Steinley said, I'm not going to talk about city charters today. While we favor proportional remedies to CVRI situations, our organization and our members have been involved with several jurisdictions that have switched to district elections. Most cities, by this stage of the process, the last public hearing before maps can be considered, informed their residents how they may submit proposed maps. Most make available through their demographer, the ability to use online web-based mapping software so that ordinary people can create maps and submit them for consideration, and hold workshops to show people how to use that software. Menlo Park did this when they went to district elections. So did the cities of Sunnyvale and Santa Clara. The city of Hayward in Alameda County is doing this right now as they go through the districting process. And most demographers provide this ability. National Demographics Corporation, one of the larger vendors in this space, does this. So does Q2 Data and Research, which is involved in the Hayward redistrict, I'm sorry, Hayward Distorting. Whether it be map attitude or data's redistricting or proprietary program, most demographers do this. Earlier, the mayor asked staff if the city could provide this ability, and staff said they'd look into it. You'll be happy to know that redistricting partners does provide that option. It says on their website that one of the services they provide is, quote, "an online mapping option to facilitate deeper community engagement by allowing members of the public to draw and describe their community of interest or draw potential district lines." Now, they may charge extra for that service, and it may not be in the current contract that you have with them. But I strongly urge you to provide that ability. I think it's safe to say that Los Altos has a population that is relatively comfortable with technology. And you would be doing your constituents a disservice not to provide this option. And whether the software is set up for four districts or five districts, one can easily use it to draw a map of the other configuration. If you don't think that's possible, just ask me how to do it because I've done that. As for four districts plus a citywide mayor versus five districts, while I have no opinion of that matter, when Santa Clara and Sunnyvale went to districts due to CVRI actions, they also included a mayor elected at large. As far as I'm aware, no city that went to districts plus an at-large mayor due to a CVRI action has ever been subject to a subsequent CVRI action because their mayor was elected at large. In fact, when districting has been imposed by a court, the court gives deference to the city as to their preference, and that's what happened in Santa Clara. Finally, while the Fair Maps Act does prohibit consideration of where the incumbents live when drawing district lines, public input concerning the sequencing, that is which district should go first, that can take into consideration which districts the incumbents end up in. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Sharon Finckel.
Morning and thank you. Um, I've been thinking a lot about this communities of interest. I just can't figure out what would be specific to certain areas. But I like Megan's suggestion about walkability because that applies to me and my family. We live in a little And my family, we live in a little bubble of Los Altos on the Mountain View side of Springer. And so our community of interest does tend to be downtown because we go to the library. So for me, the libraries are really important. The commercial districts make sense. And to correct one speaker who said the only thing that seems to get people excited here is parking in trees, I would also suggest the dog park. Got a lot of people excited and traffic around schools. I thought about school boundaries, that makes no sense because, one, the boundaries are a little crazy and they change depending on demographics for the school districts. And age, I don't know how you would do that. I don't know how you do culture and language. One of the things I love about Los Altos is we do have many cultures and many languages, but they're spread out throughout the city. There's no one cultural or art district. So I guess as someone to provide input on the form or to be happy with the solution, I need better guidelines because I just don't see these little bubbles of community of interest that are specific to certain areas. So it sounds like we're stuck with geography. But again, I'll just say I like the walkability idea. That would serve my needs, I suppose. I'm against a city referendum, and I do, now that I've been listening, like the five district idea. I wasn't sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Carol Wonderlick.
Two questions, I think, the answers to which will maybe change the way that we feel about making this change. The first one is, and Councilmember Meadows referred to it. It explicitly said in your presentation, which I believe is a quote from the law itself, that we cannot use ethnicity as the sole basis for making decisions. But is that not the sole reason we're here? Is that not the sole reason we're here? So that seems like an intrinsic conflict to me. And until that's resolved, I don't think that anyone who lives in this city is gonna get behind this idea. So maybe the city attorney could address that for us, we could address that glaring conflict. If we can't take ethnicity into account, why are we here?
Could I answer that question in turn, or do you have a second question? Do I might be able to answer both?
My second question is, I'm sorry, I missed the first meeting and maybe it was discussed then. But I did read in the town prior that at large, or not, I'm sorry, not at large, but ranked choice voting could also address our problem. And apparently we've decided not to go in that direction, but I haven't put any discussion as to why we decided not to go in that direction. And I'd like to know what the thinking was there as well.
So as to the first question, you're correct that it cannot be the sole factor, and it cannot be the predominant factor when we're thinking of communities of interest, but it can be a factor that is considered. And so in terms of the races that are considered according to the Federal Voting Rights Act, those are usually Latinos, Asian Americans, and African Americans. But those are distinct from different cultures and ethnicities or languages that are considered when we're drawing the communities of interest. Because amongst Asian Americans, there could be Vietnamese Americans, Indian Americans, Chinese Americans. And so when we're considering how to put communities of interest together, we're not simply grouping them based on the race of being Asian Americans together. We're considering a multitude of factors.
Still don't think you've answered my question. If we can't consider race, why are we having this discussion?
Can I try? You, you are hitting on a core fundamental paradox, I'm not right, right word, but, but there, there's, there is a disconnect between what we have been told we are doing wrong and what we are adopting as the solution for that wrong. And Councilmember Meadows, at, at several meetings, has done an excellent job of pointing that out. You are now doing an excellent job of pointing that out. I, I can tell you, the, the only thing I can tell you with 100% certainty is that no one is going to be able to give you, to give Councilmember Meadows, to give me or anyone else in this room, a satisfactory answer. The way that I look at it is this. We can all agree that disparate, that unequal treatment based on race is, is wrong and is contrary to law. And where that exists, we want to take action to stop that. The CVRA, the California Voting Rights Act, which is the statute under which we find ourselves now moving forward, makes clear that if there is some sort of identifiable racial disparity in how elections take place in a community, that cannot be permitted. Now, the city council denies that we have a racially polarized electorate. Our attorneys will deny it, so we, we, we are not admitting this. However, because of the way the statute is written and the way that it has been interpreted by courts in how to identify whether there is racial disparity in how elections are carried out on an at-large basis. Because of the way that is, that, that the law identifies that and analyzes that, a cogent argument can be made by a plaintiff that Los Altos has racially polarized voting. Again, I don't believe it does. I'm thinking, and my colleagues believe it does. I don't believe you believe, that, I was thinking, when this room believe that it does. But the issue under the law is whether an attorney can make that argument based upon the way that the statute is written and has been interpreted by courts. So when, what's, bear, bear with us, because I, I apologize for taking a long time on this. But what, once that bridge has been crossed, where, where we acknowledge that a plaintiff's attorney can make that argument on behalf of their client against the city, the next question is, what does the law permit us to do to correct that problem, assuming a problem is found under the law? And, 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 and this is where the disconnect is, right? Because we, we don't want to allow racial disparity in voting. But we cannot use race as a basis to solve the problem. The law gives us a certain number of tools to try to solve that problem. And for a general law city that does not have its own charter, like Los Altos and like many smaller cities, the, the, the only practical solution is having district-based elections. And then if you're going to, to draw up districts, then you have to follow the Fair Maps Act, which has all these other criteria. Ultimately, we are not allowed to use race as a basis for creating these districts. And yet we're here because there has been an allegation that there is racially polarized voting. That, that is a tension that, that cannot be satisfactorily bridged because I don't think that there is a way to do it. The way that I look at it is, the law says you can't have racial disparity in voting, and I get that, I agree with that. The law also says you cannot use race as a basis for creating districts. I understand and I get that too. It, it's simply something that we need to work within what the law does allow. And, and my belief.
What you're saying is, the answer is, what a previous speaker said, it's a sort of an Alice in Wonderland kind of a thing.
No, I, I would, I would not say that it's an Alice in Wonderland type of a thing. I think that the criteria upon which we are allowed to, to, to consider, in, in, I think it's, I don't think it's going to happen in Los Altos, but in other cities that have gone through the process. I think that in looking at the criteria one is able to identify as a community of interest does fit in with making districts that, that, that address the problem of racial disparity. But to the extent that they do not, the CVRA, the solutions don't satisfy, don't solve the problem that it claims to identify as, as needing a solution.
Okay. And you touched on my second question when you talked about possible solutions. So why not ranked choice voting?
We cannot do ranked choice voting in Los Altos because we are a general law city. And by the time we got Mr. Shankman's letter, there simply was not enough time to put on some type of a solution that would have allowed us to vote in a different way. Now, now I will say, Mr. Shankman's letter also came too late for him to say we have to have this in place by 20, the 2024 election. So, so it's, there, there's a trade-off there.
And what about the issue of standing? He doesn't live here. He's not been in charge.
The, the question of standing, it doesn't matter where the attorney lives. The question is where the plaintiff lives. So my, my, my understanding is that if there is just one Los Altos resident who is a member of the organization he claims to represent, I believe that that would establish standing. And, and even though we have not demanded that Mr. Shankman identify such a person, there is no doubt in my mind that he would be able to find one.
Thank you.
I, I want to look at council and make sure that I have not overstepped on anything. Okay, next please.
The last speaker I have a card for is Katie Zaglin.
Good, well, now it's afternoon. My name is Katie Zaglin. I'm speaking my individual capacity. I just wanted to make two brief comments as to the four one split or five districts. I worked as an attorney for the city of San Jose and as well as for Santa Clara County for both of them for more than 20, 20 years. Both have district elections. I observed that when push comes to shove, people who represent a district represent the interests of those districts. So if you're looking for someone who's going to look out for the interests of everyone in Los Altos, you might want to consider having a mayor voted for at, at large. But that's obviously up to you. But my years of experience demonstrated that people do vote their, vote for their, their district's interests. And then a second point, as Mr. Chesson noted, redistricting partners does have an online mapping option. When I was on the, the county's advisory redistricting commission a couple of years ago, that was available, although I have to say it was very, very, it was a bad one. It was very difficult to navigate or to use. So if you guys are, are going to ask them for that option, hopefully it has been greatly improved since then because it was, o- only a handful of people were able to, to use it to really, for it to be effective. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think we, we're done with, with our.
Yes, so people know that there is a, a district mapping tool online. What Steph was going to look into is if we could make it more interactive because it, it is pretty static, but it is available, it is online. And our district partners is the one that provided it. So we will see if we can make it more, more interactive, but there, there is one online right now.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Is there anyone who would like to speak that has not yet had an opportunity to do so?
Yeah, I'm Jim Davidson, and just wanted to take with them strongly in favor of the four one supposed to five oh split. A statement in here, I think it has a couple of advantages. One is, these are mostly advantages from the voter's point of view. One is that we get an extra vote every four years, which will help to maintain interest in the goings-on so that might otherwise wane when, you know, our vote isn't required except for the, the once every four years. And of course, the other one is districts become larger, so we have something that's a little closer to what we have now. And I think most of the people here feel that what we have now is actually working pretty well, notwithstanding what Mr. Shankman says. So I am strongly in favor of four one, and I ask you to keep that in mind going forward.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else in the public who hasn't spoken?
My name's Rob Schwartz. I've lived in town for about 40 years. I've evolved in the course of this on the four versus the five. A reason that I don't think I've heard mentioned is I have great respect. I don't disagree with everything the council does, but I have great respect for the fact that they make the commitment to the city and to the term. And I love the idea that it's rotated mayors so people at least get one year in there in the process where they get experience and there's no reward for having been the mayor of the city. With respect to the specific issue now, number one, I would like to specifically request that they demand Mr. Shankman, the specific named person who has initiated this lawsuit. I think it's totally unacceptable in Texas-based organization funded by somebody who's just on a roll with lawsuits, making a lot of money, to be able to file the lawsuit and the actual person who supposedly is trying to restructure the Los Altos government can hide behind curtains somewhere. I think that's a minimum thing that was responsible for the lawsuit and is in fact supposedly a plaintiff to be a named person. The other thing I was wondering about is I was listening to the concept of a lawsuit and whatever, and the discussion of. Go back to a different point here. The, with respect to the lawsuit and the issue of racial, which I, I agree with the last lady. Who's kidding who? That's what this is all about. That's the basis of the law. And they've coached it with alternatives, as you, as the mayor, as you specifically said. Is there not? I haven't read the actual pleading, which I assume is probably a form letter from Mr. Shankman that he sent into other cities. Is there anything about that pleading which links it to implied discrimination racially, which doesn't exist in this city by any objective standard? Is there anything about that where we could not just address that issue on a summary judgment basis while we're simultaneously going to the process, which I understand that we're going through because technically complying with state law?
Thank you.
So there hasn't been a lawsuit which has yet been filed, so there's no complaint or pleading. We have received a letter from Mr. Shankman in which he alleges that there is racially polarized voting as it relates to Asian Americans in the city of Los Altos. So in terms of resolving it at a motion for summary judgment stage, that's not the issue right now. Currently, we're in a safe harbor period pursuant to Elections Code, Section 110, which gives the city a grace period to convert to district elections. And if it does so, then it pays $30,000 to Shankman in terms of his attorney's fees, and then we are therefore immune from any seat.
Let me add on just, just a couple of details to that. So I think, and so I did, thank you for that, it's a very good job. The, the, the safe harbor provision, I think, as was implied, means that if the city in good faith is moving forward toward adopting district elections, Mr. Shankman is not allowed to file a lawsuit. So we, we are in that period since we are doing what the law ultimately wants us to do. The law prohibits Mr. Shankman from filing his lawsuit as long as we're moving forward with going to the districts and we actually, in fact, adopt those districts. There is, there is, there is a website, there's a web, there's a page on the city's website specifically devoted to districting. And there was a copy of Mr. Shankman's letter on that website, so anyone can click the link and download a copy of the letter. The letter does allege that there is racial discrepancy toward candidates of Asian American descent. So there, there is an affirmative allegation in the letter. It will be more than $30,000 because the law actually inflates that based on cost of. It will be more than thirty thousand dollars because the law actually inflates that based on cost of living or inflation. Like, what is it, it's gonna be about thirty eight thousand or so, is that? So it's good, it's ultimately going to be in the range of thirty seven to thirty eight thousand dollars. I can tell you that, that Santa Monica has fought Mr. Shankman and they are now looking at a turn, paying attorney's fees of what, forty million dollars?
What is the population of Santa Monica and what is their demographic compared to ours?
I, I, I don't know the answer to that. I can't, I can't say more than the council has taken all of the circumstances into account. We have met in closed session because this was threatening litigation. And we talked with our attorneys about the things that any litigant would talk to their attorneys about. Given the information we have, given the advice of our counsel, who I think have represented about ten other cities in, in dealing with Mr. Shankman and their experiences and their expertise with the law, our own city attorney and her expertise with the law, and our, you know, the tension between that and the council's deep desire not to do this. We ultimately came to the conclusion that this was the, the way that we had to move forward as a matter of law. And that, and that's where we are, where we are. Now certainly, Los Altos is different from any other communities, and we, any other community is different from, from Los Altos. But I, I can't say more than the city council thought long and hard and asked a lot of questions. And this is not something we want to be doing anymore than you want us to be doing it. But we do feel compelled by law that this is the direction that we have to go forward.
Here, may I, actually, I have another point, I think this was raised during the break, as to the size of the jurisdiction and whether that matters. And unfortunately, under the CVRA, um, the size or population of the city doesn't really matter. And there have been much smaller jurisdictions which, jurisdictions which have been forced to transition.
Yeah, there was a someone that mentioned districts. And yes, the, the, some small sanitary water sewer districts, special districts, this applies to them. So it, it could, I hate to say this, but it could be worse. I mean, you have a very small district that provides water and sewer, and then all of a sudden you go to, your board becomes a district board. And it's difficult finding people for those.
Um, I believe that there could be a legislative solution to the problem that we face here today, but that legislative solution won't come from this body, it would come from Sacramento. And I would encourage anyone who was inclined to do so to contact, uh, our state senator Josh Becker and our assembly member, um, Mark Berman. Sorry, Mark. Uh, their, their offices do keep track of comments that they are getting from, from their constituents. And you, you are their constituents the same way you are our constituents. They, they do want to hear from you and they will take into account how you feel. And I, I can tell you from personal experience, I've talked to both of them many times. Uh, and they do care what Los Altos thinks and, and, and what Matters does. So I, I, I would encourage you, if you're not already done so, to contact their offices and let them know what you think. Before I bring it back to council, I, I just, I want to note the irony here that this is just about the most unified, I think, that I've ever seen the council and the community. And it is, uh, it was with respect to something that is designed to disunite us, to, to cause division. I want to thank staff, certainly, our attorneys, my colleagues, but most of all, you people who show up to our meetings, who write us letters, who talk to us about this. It, it, we, we appreciate hearing from you and it, it is comforting to know that on something as monumental as this, we can come together as a community and unite in, in what we want and to find ways to work toward making that situation as good as it can possibly be. So I will thank you for that. Before I turn it over to my colleagues, I do want to talk a little bit about the districting mapping exercise. The city manager mentioned that it is on our website. I went ahead and downloaded it and printed it out. And I am delighted to let staff know, and hopefully my colleagues will agree, that there is a tremendous opportunity to improve this. The exercise as it's set up right now is designed to be downloaded, loaded as a worksheet. And then there are, I don't know, maybe forty or so blocks of the city and numbers that identify, uh, an estimated population. In order to complete this exercise, someone needs to print out the paper. They need to sit down with a calculator or a notepad or something and start playing around with numbers. There are some things that, that I would request from staff and, and, you know, my colleagues will weigh on this as well if they've looked at it. The first is, if there is a way to do this interactively online, I mean, it, it feels like this cries out for some kind of, of in, in, interactive, uh, uh, format. I note that Mr. Chessen has seen this company do it, and apparently it's not very good. If there are others that are better, maybe we can borrow their, you know, but whatever we have to do, I think that we are going to get much greater participation if people are able to do this online. To the extent that we are not able to do that, or to the extent that people would prefer to print these out, I would request that, number one, that the exercise be formatted for eight and a half by eleven. I, I printed it out on eight and a half by eleven, but I think that the exercise itself is designed for bigger paper. So it's readable, but it's, it's smaller than it would be otherwise. And I think there should also be a color as well as a black and white option. Right now, there's only a full color option. I printed it out, and for the most part, I can tell the difference between the blocks. But there are a few places where it's not easy to identify where the boundaries are between blocks when looking at a black and white printout of a document intended for color. I think that it would also be useful to ask, uh, Mr. Mitchell, do you have a brief explanation of how he came up with the blocks? Because, I mean, it's, you have to have small units and put them together, and you can't have it house by house because that would become unwieldy. At the same time, I do foresee that people will, will say, well, why did you have a block that's drawn like this? Why didn't you draw the block a different way? And, and presumably, Mr. Mitchell has an answer to that, but I think it may be worthwhile to put that explanation somewhere on the website. Oh, and lastly, uh, I'll make the request to staff, could you please have copies of, of the exercise available at all future council meetings and maybe put them up at the counter at City Hall as well? Let's make it as easy as possible for people to get these. Right now, the directions suggest that people work, do the worksheet, take a photo of it and email it. You can, you can also hard mail it or drop it off, but maybe we can have drop boxes at, at the library, you know, the Grant Park Community Center, ma- make it as easy as possible, especially for people who are not particularly technically savvy. Because we, we want as much participation in this as we can possibly get. Okay, uh, with that, I will look to my colleagues and ask who would like to go first. Councilor Liang?
I just want to say, you're all Americans. This whole idea of disenfranchising based on race and, uh, destiny and everything else is just divisive. I think we should all say that we're all Americans, let's just keep it that way. I think that's the best for our liberty and the future of, uh, generations. Thank you, sorry about that.
Vice Mayor. First, I want to note that I support the California Voting Rights Act, uh, and the impetus for that act and for the federal act. Uh, I would also point out that the majority of the people of color in this room are actually sitting up here at the table. Not that it necessarily matters for how we deliberate today, but it does matter for how Los Altos is viewed by, um, by our neighbors, by our residents, by potential future residents and so forth. And so I, I, I don't feel that we have racially polarized voting that distorts outcomes in Los Altos. And I do feel like we are being forced into a solution for a problem that doesn't exist for us. And so therefore, that puts us into the realm of unintended consequences, as the previous speaker noted. But the intended consequences for this legislation Is it better if I stand back here? The intended consequences for this act and for the federal act do address real problems. And so I would hope that as we push forward to find a solution to a problem that doesn't exist in our own community, we remember that those problems do exist elsewhere. And that we basically focus our efforts on trying to minimize the unintended consequences. That's kind of what this is a, an exercise in for me. So some of the things that we might consider after we move to, uh, or after we start to review the maps and so forth, uh, we, we may want to consider other reforms to our, to our uh, electoral system here in Los Altos. But first and foremost, we have to move forward in good faith with this districting process. And I appreciate everybody's patience, as I said, and as the mayor said, and several others. We're sort of being dragged kicking and screaming into this. And so I do want to just remind everybody that while your well, this is going to impact you, your participation in our local democracy, right? We also have to think about how democ- how democracy is, is, is implemented and, and, and conducted, uh, at large, in, or not at large, but, you know, in, in our, in our state and so forth. So, uh, let's, let's refrain from, um, pointing fingers, blaming people. This could easily devolve into more conflict between our residents. And, and so please remember to be as considerate and thoughtful as possible as we try to work through this process. And that's what I have to say about this process. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Do you have a preference between five districts or four plus one? I support five districts. Thank you. Councilor Metis?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you to the community for coming forward and really giving us helpful input today. And staff for being here on a Saturday, in tides, no less, some of you. So, and we, we do all share uh, probably a high level of frustration with the fact that we're here discussing that. And I, I don't want to repeat anything I said before, even though I did make a comment in my, in the question period earlier. I, I do also want to, I'll, I'll just express one more frustration that I have, and then I'm going to move beyond it to, uh, looking forward. In addition to the, the sort of irony or paradox, whatever the correct word is between why we're here and then what we can and cannot consider for our districts. My frustration was that every single instance where, where a CVRA lawsuit or a threat of a lawsuit letter is received, if that jurisdiction, whether it's a city or a school board or whatever, has to go to districts because that's what the courts support, then why didn't the courts just say, okay, all jurisdictions shall transition to districts by X, Y, Z versus setting up this ambulance chaser paradigm, as I call it. And we're all familiar with that from the ADA side too. Um, and so to me, this is frustrating because it's created a side industry at all of our expenses. And so as the Vice Mayor said, and I think everyone will say, um, we support the intent, we don't want to disenfranchise anybody. And as one of the commenter said, we're, it, it goes beyond, we're all Americans, we're all neighbors, right? And, and, and so regardless, citizen, voter, or resident, or just somebody who comes into town, we don't want to disenfranchise anybody. So then let me move forward, I got my last frustration out, maybe, maybe my last. And I do want to emphasize that we, we adopted a resolution within forty five days of receiving Mr. Shankman's letter. Because if we hadn't adopted that resolution to undergo this process in good faith, we would have been sued on day forty six. So by undergoing this, this, uh, process in good faith, we now have a deadline of October thirty first to go through the process and adopt, um, adopt districts. I will say that we're going through a districting process versus districting because even though we are in good faith moving forward to districting, we're still going through a process. And if a knight in a horse or a legislator in a horse were to come galloping in with a legislative solution, we would consider that. And we will consider any legal, um, options to make sure we're giving as many of our residents a chance to be represented in this city. So the process, as we know now, we're anticipating adopting the districts and we're moving forward to that in good faith. But we will, of course, consider all information and options as they come forward to us that are legal and support not disenfranchising anybody. So, um, regarding the, uh, the four one versus five zero, and I appreciate actually, um, the four one pros or a couple of the pros that were brought up today that I, I really hadn't, um, thought about before. I, I still believe and that in the five oh scenario, it is the responsibility and it's, it's been stressed in some of the presentations as we've been going through our hearings on this. That is, is the responsibility of every city council member, even in the district. And I realize perhaps it's naive to feel this way, but you're supposed to represent the whole city. I do think there's a big difference between huge Santa Clara or huge San Jose. You know, in Los Altos, we're what, seven square miles? And we actually, you know, if we're mobily able, we can walk end to end from our city, though it does take a while. And I wouldn't want to do it in the heat we've been having. But, um, so I, I do feel that, um, I also support the five oh. Even though I appreciate the potential benefits for a mayor, but I think there's actually more, uh, uh, sorry, uh, an elected mayor. And I do want to clarify that elected mayor doesn't necessarily serve a four-year term. That would be one of the decisions, if we decided four one, we have to decide whether that's a two-year term or a four-year term. But I do think it's, it's important, I think the reputation is good for all of us. It gives us each a chance of leadership and collaboration and of, um, representing the community. So although an elected mayor would certainly represent the whole community, by putting each, um, council member in that position, we have the opportunity to meet more of our community face to face at all the events you go to, um, as mayor. What you can go to is council, to the council person too. But anyway, so I, I also think that, um, if the, the cost to our city for having, let's say, maybe a core mayor, whether we elect to them, elect them to two or four years is, um, much higher potentially than if we just rotate through and we have some, let's say, we have some good mayors, we have some mediocre mayors, I'm not going to classify anyone, including myself. But the cost, if we happen to elect, um, a mayor that wasn't as collaborative or constructive for us, that would really be a higher price for the community to pair, uh, to pay um, in terms of, again, um, bringing us all together. So I do support, uh, the five oh, um, whatever you call the paradigm option. Was there another question that we were addressing? That was it, okay. That's, that's me, all right.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Fager?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and just to clarify on what questions we're answering. Does staff and our attorneys want us to weigh in on the communities of interest as well? Or we're just gathering feedback and input from the community on that topic?
Yeah, we're gathering, gathering feedback from the public on the communities of interest.
Yeah, we're gathering feedback from the public on the communities of interest, but we would like direction on the four plus one versus five in council.
That being said, I anticipate that Mr. Mitchell is going to watch this if he's not watching it live. So if you have thoughts on communities of interest, I think this is the appropriate time to mention them so that he can give that consideration as he draws his first draft of maps.
Great. That's what I was thinking as well, but I realized that wasn't being asked of us. And so again, thanks, you know, based on the time, I won't repeat what has already been said. We do not like this. We didn't want to do this. We wish we could avoid it, but we're moving forward in good faith. So on the question before council on four one versus five zero on the number of districts. And I recognize just based on public comments that have already been made by my colleagues on council and most people here today and other communications we've received to date, that there's more support for five districts as opposed to four districts and an at-large mayor. I still want to put on the record that I'm more in favor of four districts and an at-large mayor. And one of the reasons why I asked for special counsel early on in the meeting about at what point if we realize that five districts isn't working, we can move to four one or vice versa, just to understand what that process looks like. Because I think for a lot of us, until we're in that system and we realize how it really works, I don't think we'll fully appreciate the downside of having, and because I'm in favor of four one, for me, the downside of having five districts versus four districts and a separately elected at-large mayor, just to delve into that some more. That separately elected at-large mayor, every voter in Los Altos would jointly. And one of the reasons why a lot of us are opposed to the letter is because we think it's going to divide or say, now everybody's going to be looking out for their district, lobbying their district representative. Make sure you get this for my part. Make sure your, make sure all roads look better than District Two roads. This happens. You heard people who have experienced working with public jurisdictions where this happens. It comes down to everyone fighting for what's in their district. And as someone said, you know, not necessarily this council, but they've seen council members on our Los Altos council do that, even though they're at-large, represent their own community, which is not what we're supposed to do. So when you have an at-large elected mayor, and again, this is a weak mayor. No one I'm familiar with, and I am not advocating for a strong mayor. The mayor would have the exact same role of our current mayor where they work with the city manager to set the agenda and attend events. But the key difference here is when you have the four other council members advocating for their district, and ideally, yes. Ideally, you want each district person, even though they're elected, but those are the people they're going to want electing them in four years. But ideally, you want these district representatives to still have this broad global parole of Saltes. But in reality, unfortunately, that doesn't happen. A matter of fact, I was just at a conference in Pasadena, meeting with council members from all across the state. And this was the number one topic I'd bring up in our breaks. And that's just the reality of it. And I know for a lot of people, it may not seem that way. And I appreciate the idea of having the rotation where everybody gets the opportunity to be mayor. And there definitely benefits to that. But I don't want us to lose sight of the downside that other cities have experienced. And I know maybe only big cities have been mentioned. But where if you have a district representative acting as the mayor, that person, because they represent that one district, those are the voters in the district who are going to vote for them, that unfortunately, they do end up advocating and pushing policies and agenda items that would benefit their district. And so by having this at-large weak mayor, and I would support, I think in our packet, it says two or four years. I definitely think it should be a two-year term. I think neighboring cities have two-year terms or more mid-sized cities. I definitely think it would be a two-year term for that mayor. I think it would align with each election where that would mean every two years, the entire voting population of Los Altos gets to vote for their at-large mayor. So, you know, I listen and I'm thinking, ideally, what I hear my colleagues describe on many residents, and I appreciate the feedback. That's how we would want our mayor to act, even if he or she is only elected by one district. But unfortunately, that's not the reality of the situation. I also want to touch on the point about it's going to get confused because we currently rotate and hope we're going to have to switch it to at-large. We are already changing how we vote starting in two years. So for me, now would be the time, if we're going to make changes, just make a clean change of saying we're going to move to districts. And as part of this process, we're going to move to an at-large elected weak mayor with a two-year term. You know, we have currently where we rotate, and I think one of the speakers, and by the way, friends of mine, neighbors have mentioned why they prefer five districts and I've talked to them and they recognize, well, you know, you have a good point there on the benefits. But I want to point out that even though to the mayor's point earlier, that, and the city attorney weighed in as well, you have three councils, if you have three council members asking to get something agendized, it is still up to the mayor, and I really appreciated our current mayor saying this, it's still up to the mayor to work with the city manager to decide when that gets on the agenda. I want to make that distinction because I appreciated our mayor mentioning, I don't think he intended me to use it this way, but I was happy he asked it. So the mayor cannot stop majority of council members from putting an item on a future agenda. But the mayor does sit with the city manager and decide what's going to agendize, unless there's a legal reason or, you know, staff really needs an item to move forward and a timing issue. And so I want us to imagine that context of if you have a district council member, because we're under the rotation, when he or she is setting the agenda. Again, I ideally would love, and I can, I think if, you know, I could speak for colleagues here, I think if any of us here under a district system of five districts were to serve as mayor, we would all still represent the entire community. But sitting here, we have no idea who is going to get elected in two, four, six, eight years from now. And whether or not they will still have the same, because we, and I think this may weigh into it too, where we are at-large elected officials. So we came in already with this mindset of representing the entire community. Fast forward to when we have individuals who are going to come in with the mindset of, this is my district. This is how I got elected. I hope if majority of council members today decide to go with five districts, that whoever gets elected in the future, they still have this mindset of thinking about our entire small community as one community who they represent, and they're able to wear those two hats. People have spoken, will tell you that's not what they've seen in other jurisdictions. I've talked to council members from across the state. That's not what happens in reality. And so I am definitely in favor of four districts with an at-large mayor. I respect my colleagues well. And so, you know, majority or more today wants to go with five. I support that as well. We'll make it work. We'll make it work to the best of our ability. But I really wanted to put on the record, recognizing I may be in the minority, which is okay. But I definitely wanted to make the case and put on the record that there are so many advantages to the entire Los Altos community. And it ties in with the reasons we're hearing people are against the CVRA. Right? This would actually have someone, a weak mayor, unifying us. Where he or she, when he comes to your district, he's your mayor, goes to another district, he's your mayor. Yes, if it's the district representative still wearing that hat, he or she should still be your mayor. But there's a different perception. There could be. So definitely in support of it. On the legal piece, I appreciate Mr. Chesson pointing out, and I know our special counsel as well. Yes, you know, let's not ignore the fact that there is a risk there, but it's a small risk and no one has been sued because we could make the argument, there's so many advantages, we've moved to four districts. This is why it makes sense to have this individual representing the entire community. On the, so I'll stop there. On my advocacy, I really wanted to put that on the public record, and I want to thank the speakers who spoke in favor of that. On the communities of interest, I appreciate the comments about walkability. You know, the school districts, they can get confusing. Right now, we have Montclair, which is our CUSD elementary school. But then we also have eight elementary schools in our Los Altos School District, which is our other elementary middle school, school district. And so, you know, you do the math, there's really no way, I think those should be considerations for me, colleagues. But for me, thinking about the seven business districts we have here in Los Altos and the idea when we think about our environmental priority or housing priority, there's a lot of talk right now about making neighborhoods that are walkable. And so to the extent we can draw the lines around the different shopping districts so that we maintain that walkability and every resident in Los Altos would have that opportunity to say, that's my, you know, business district. I think for me, that's important. El Camino, the corridor there, I think there can be an argument made that that corridor should stay together. The downtown area should definitely stay together. I appreciated the comment about Loyola Corners. I think if we do the math, Loyola Corners may not be it may not amount to the number, I think if we're, even with a five district map. But keeping Loyola Corners as a community within a bigger district, I think that makes sense to me too. So those are my comments on communities of interest. I do believe a four one is better and it aligns better with the concerns I'm hearing from the community. But if we decide to do five districts, I obviously will support that as well. I do want to ask our special counsel or city attorney, is today the last day for us to decide five districts versus four districts or one? And if it isn't, is there a drop dead deadline for us to do so?
So from the legal perspective, the last day to decide would be on October 8th, and we have the final meeting adopting the map. It would make it easier on the demographer to draw proposed maps either with the four configuration versus the five configuration, then he's able to do both. So that just depends on the direction from council.
So the demographer could, over the six-week break, during the break in the schedule, could actually work on both a five district map and a four district map. Because at the same time, so I don't want to add to the schedule. Okay, thank you.
To follow up on that, how much would it cost the city to have Mr. Mitchell prepare both types of maps, assuming that he is a man with to do it? I know, I know that we would be asking him to do twice as much work, which I'm sure was not anticipated in his contract. But assuming that he has the time to do both, if we wanted to go that route, how much do we think that would cost the city?
I don't think we'd be able to estimate that at this point, but I wouldn't think the cost would be prohibitive if council wanted to consider that.
Councilmember Lee. Thank you. Before we go to my points, if you could bring up the district mapping exercise page on page thirty for me, I'd greatly appreciate an opportunity to speak to that as we move forward.
It'll be.
Okay. But it's going to take a minute. I can speak to something first and then I'll come back to that. So whether we go to the four one district or five districts, I appreciate your thought points on that. But as we can see, elections can be polarizing. And I think our district at times have been experiencing a lot of polarization. I think it's clear, to be fair, and I think that having the five districts will allow us to do so. I think it was important that if the mayor opportunity is rotated to each representative of each district, I think each district would feel a sense of respect. As we all know, campaigning and campaigning is expensive. So creating another election every two years, I think is not something that our community, even though we have to vote for assembly members every two years. I just think that it creates more where public or special interest funds come from and may affect how our mayor positions are looked at. And that way, if there is concern for special interest funding, then we should try to create a special type of funding program for electeds in our city if we have a mayor. So if you can make it bigger, so then I guess I would ask you, because I think it's
That section of the
That section of the page where we highlight the points, is that possible?
Yes, sorry.
That's page thirty. Well, anyhow, when we talked about the rules, and each block, it has numbers. So it has a block with colored numbers. She's going to pull up the page and then you'll understand what I'm talking about. Otherwise, you can make it smaller again.
I think her computer's frozen.
Get someone else share the screen. It's page thirty of the packet.
The lag.
Okay, the wifi here, I understand that. And if we can enlarge that one size. Otherwise, if we keep that page on, that's fine. I'll speak to that page. So as you can see, on that page, oh, there, it's getting bigger. Okay, as you can see on that page, you have different sections with different colors, right? So you have these numbers here. I'm just gonna go on the corner of Okay, yeah. So why don't we choose, you see the green square right there? Is that five fifty? Six fifty, yeah, right there. For example, it says six fifty. When we talk about that six fifty, I believe that map is speaking about households, correct? Because if we're adding up all this, then the numbers aren't right. And I thought we were told that we have to take in account people, not citizens or not voters. And if we're talking about households, how do we really know the true numbers as we figure out our mapping? That's one of my questions.
So this map shows the US Census blocks, so it should show the number of individuals as opposed to the number of citizens or voters. This map was developed by our consulting demographer, redistricting partners. So if the numbers don't add up to the total population of Los Altos, I can check in with them about that. But this should be based on census blocks.
Okay. Yeah, because I think we would have to revisit that, because if you say that the five, okay, I just want to make sure. So I want to make sure we're not talking about household. We're talking about the number of individuals.
Yes, and I'll double check.
Okay, that'd be great. That was my one point. So I did speak to the five districts supportive of the five districts. The other thing was, I wanted to speak to the communities of interest. And I want to make clear that definitely the school district attendance areas was important, like Cupertino Union School District, Fremont Union School District. Separating, we've heard of as well from our members in our community. And I think that's important because we definitely have a clear demarcation of where our boundaries are for the Cupertino Fremont Union High School districts are. The other thing is for the community of interest, I'd like to definitely look at the claims of unmet needs on funding for I'd like to definitely look at the claims of unmet needs on funding for, um. Our priorities in our community and how that's, um, prioritized, so. Funding to projects of unmet needs based on, um, demographics within our city. And then if we could look at the amount of projects that are unmet. I think that's an important way to identify as well. And the different areas based on locations in our city. We should also taking it to account our senior center. And libraries, so we have two senior centers, two library. So I hope we can keep that in mind, I don't think, oh, the map went down. So I was just thinking that. When we look at the man-made arterial or man-made, um. Arterial areas. It's not that, like I know you brought up the area on the railroad mapping. Because if you look at. The Cupertino Fremont Union High School District, it would include, um. The west. That, that, the east. East-west side on how we do mapping. And I know people refer to maybe we should look at north-south. But this is one of the reasons why we may have to consider east-west. Because, um, even though you might not, you want to create a boundary using. Butte Hill Expressway, you might not have to look at it that way. And then like the major roads like Grant Road, we have a section. That's on the other side of Grant Road, that's part of the Cupertino. Fremont Union High School District. So I think it's important to keep those, um, together and. I appreciate all that you've done for us today and thank you everyone for coming.
Okay, thank you very much, councilmember. You know, it's ironic to me actually looking at the map of Los Altos, the city actually runs northwest-southeast. So saying east-west versus north-south is, is difficult, but I think I, I understand. Uh, and our consultant will understand what Mr. Stanley and, and councilmember, the hang of that mentioned. I want to thank Councilmember Flagler for her comments just now, when this process first started, there was no doubt in my mind that I supported five-nothing. When we were done with the first meeting, I was ninety-five percent of five-nothing, when I walked in today, I was seventy percent in favor of five-nothing. The last couple of speakers who spoke in favor of four-one, I think made very important points. And Councilman Flagler, especially your, your, uh, what you heard from people, from, from our colleagues in other cities and their experiences. Is, is, is moving to me and, and has continued to sway me toward a four-one. However, I also think that our, our former mayors spoke, Mayor Saddleley and Mayor Lear made some very useful points. Um, and I tend to agree with the majority that having a rotating mayor, so we're sure that. Every district in, in the city eventually has representation as mayor is a good thing. And, and I think I, I am colored to feel that way because the, the norms and procedures that we have in place. Have encouraged a rotating mayor. That being said, that they are norms and procedures, and if, if it turns out that there is a council member. Who, you know, the four council members are concerned about being mayor, uh, that that person does not. Does not necessarily follow that they're going to become a mayor. Because councilmembers can decide to, to. Pass someone over, uh, and in fact, King Lear actually mentioned that that has happened. I'm glad that you laid the groundwork earlier today, that there is a mechanism that we can put in place if we determine that. The needs of the city have changed because the way that we elect county council members has changed. Uh, and I think it's something that we as citizens simply have to watch closely to decide if, if we need to, to go in a different direction. That being said, I, I, I'm now fifty-five percent still in favor of going five-nothing. I think that that's what's appropriate for Los Altos. Again, I'm mindful to what you've heard from some of our colleagues, but Los Altos is different from other cities. Even though we're going through this process, we do have, I believe, uh. We, we, we are far more alike than we are different. And I believe that the system that we have used, as King Lear said, for the past fifty years, will, will continue to serve us well, so. I'm, I'm, I, I, I think that the way to move forward is, is with the five, the five-zero. But I, but, but let's be vigilant and watch it back. And when, if it's appropriate to go to four-one, then we should make the, we should take the effort that it requires as citizens, uh, to do that. With respect to communities of interest, uh, by and large, I agree with, with just about everything that has been said, I think walkability is very important. I think that, uh, major landmarks, places where, where members of the community gather. Should be considered by our demographers, so the libraries, uh, certainly our larger parks should be taken into account. Um, I'm glad that people have brought up CUSD. I, I do think that it's important for CUSD to be a community of interest, but. Maybe not in the way that everyone else does, on, on the one hand, I see the logic in saying. CUSD is tight, it should be a community of interest. Let's do the best we can to have a district overlap with CUSD's boundaries in the city. But if we do that, that means that one district out of five. Is going to have all the focus of, of what CUSD wants. So I wonder if we look at the CUSD's boundaries in, in Los Altos and maybe divide that into two. So instead of twenty percent of our districts caring deeply about CUSD. Instead forty percent of our districts will care deeply about CUSD. Uh, I, 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 I'm not able to say I think this one way is better than the other. I think it's something that should be considered and I would very much like to hear from. Members of, of the Cupertino Union School District, what they think, what they would prefer. If they would prefer to be in one district or if they would prefer to be in more than one. Just such, just, just something I'm throwing out there. With that, um, I will make a motion that we. Okay, I'm sorry, Councilmember Flagler, you want to make a comment?
Direction.
Direction.
Yeah. I, I do, mayor, and I really appreciate your comments, um, as always. I, I guess we're not making a motion, I was going to. See if there was support to say, if there's no additional cost to the city. To have both maps, because my concern is, as more people get engaged in this process and learn more. Hypothetically, let's say August, September, we're getting more reasons why, you know, maybe other former elected officials, since we've heard from two today. There's more support for four-one in August, September, there may not be, but I don't want us to be caught flat-footed. So if there's support for that and there's no significant additional cost of the demographer doing four-one and five. I hope there's support over the six-week period to ask him to just put together, I get that majority, I'm in the minority, but I. But I, I think we should have both, just in case if there's no significant additional cost, Mr. Hanklin.
So it, it's, it's my understanding that, that it would not be cost prohibitive, so, so. I would not say cost would be a reason not to do the two different, uh, paradigm, the, the, the two different analyses. I have heard that four council members prefer five-nothing, but I have a look at my colleagues. Do my colleagues want us to go through the time and expense of having two sets of maps? I'm seeing no.
No.
No, okay. Then, then I, I think the direction from council is to move forward with, uh, maps only for five districts. And you've heard feedback with respect to communities of interest, I assume that Mr. Mitchell will get that information in due course. With that, I know that, that this has been a long meeting, I appreciate everyone who has been here. I especially want to thank city staff. For coming here on their Saturday morning slash early afternoon. Uh, this was a big ask for them, council is technically in, in recess right now, so staff expected to be in recess. Our, our staff is dressed far more professionally than I am. But, but a, a, a lot of effort went into setting up this morning and will continue to go into taking down and of course, supporting us through this process. Uh, and I am deeply appreciative to everyone, to every member of the public who has come here today. This is a tough issue. And tough issues often get very emotional and understandably so. People are emotional about this issue, but I think that people understand why. The council is moving forward in a direction that none of us want to be moving in. Nevertheless, we got really useful and important feedback. So again, I want to thank members of the public, especially those of you who are still here with us in this three-hour marathon meeting. Uh, and finally, of course, to my colleagues who also tended to be on vacation right now. Coming in on a Saturday morning to, to have this event, especially here, down at the Grand Park Community Center. With that, does anyone else on council have anything they'd like to say?
Just very quickly, since I didn't particularly remark on the communities of interest, I would. I want to reinforce the notion that CUSD should play a role, whether, as the mayor said, they get two districts or one. I do think that the schools in our community. Have historically, uh, played an important role in how communities of interest have aligned themselves.
I'm going to ask them first, I'm going to look, is anyone else on council that they want to say? No. Staff, did you get what you needed from us, is there any further business that we have today?
Yes, we got what we needed, can I take two minutes though, I'd like to just kind of say where we go next week.
Okay.
So for the members of the public, where we are at, we are, we've just finished the second of five required public meetings. From this point, the, as has been mentioned, the demographer will go and develop draft maps now. We'll continue to take public input, uh, the communities, there's a communities of interest forum on the city's website as well as the, the mapping exercise, which. Has been mentioned, we will try to see if we can find and group it for. Then following the developments of the map, we go back. So following the development of the, the maps. Um, and I apologize, I gave this presentation to the council on Tuesday and have not had a chance to update it since Tuesday. The third meeting will actually be held August twenty-eighth. Not the twenty-seventh, and that's where the draft maps will be presented to the council and the community. They will be on the city's website prior to that, uh, but that'll be the, the next. Of our five public meetings.
How much prior to the meet, to that meeting will they be available?
As, as long, as, as far prior as we can, uh, legally they have to be up for seven days prior to the meeting. So we will. Minimum of seven, so we'll, we'll get them as soon as we, we can.
And will the city managers weekly update, have a link to them and, and everywhere else we can, okay.
Yes. Jump in the slide here, but, uh, uh, following the, the third meeting will. Have a more robust community outreach, um, effort in which we get feedback on the, the draft maps. We will come back at the September twenty-fourth city council meeting to present the results of the, the outreach efforts. Um, and then, uh, as has been mentioned, October eighth is the, the fifth and final meeting when the maps will be adopted. Now, in terms of the. Sorry, my computer lost its battle with battery power. This is just a snapshot of the, the outreach we will be doing. To, to get input on the draft maps, uh, we'll be meeting with community groups as, as, uh, as we can, we'll be at the farmers markets, the libraries. We plan to go to the senior center, the, the Grand Park Senior Program, there'll be a citywide mailer, of course, through our city's website. We are also scheduling, uh, community meetings, um, so less formal than a city council meeting, but where. We'll come to Grant Park, we'll have one at the community center where it's more of an interactive workshop. Getting feedback on the map, so, um, that's where we're at today and what, what's going to come up next.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mashnam. With that, I think we are adjourned, thank you.